If you're willing and able, if you'd be kind enough to stand for the invocation, and remain standing for the flag, and I'd like to recognize Pastor TJ McBride, Tabernacle Praise International, McDonough, Georgia. Pastor, welcome.
Thank you. Let us all bow our heads. Father, we come before you on today. First of all, we just want to thank you for all that you've done for us. We thank you, Lord God, for this county. We thank you for Henry County. We thank you for your blessings upon this county. We ask now, Lord God, that on today, that your presence would be with us as we make crucial decisions regarding this county. I pray, Lord God, that your hand would rest upon this Board of Commissioners as they continue to conduct business in this county. We also ask that your presence would rest upon all those that work in this county. Father, we thank you, Lord God, that Henry County will be one of the best counties in Georgia, and it's going to be because your hand is going to lead us and guide us. Your word always compels us. "If my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek your face, turn from our wicked ways, then our land will be healed." So we declare and decree on today that this land will continue to be healed. We will continue to walk in harmony. Most of all, Lord, you lead us and you guide us. Bless us in this session, we pray, in Jesus' name. Everyone say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
For the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM Tuesday, September 15th, 2015 meeting come to order. I have an announcement. The following item was advertised but has been postponed by staff and will not be heard at this meeting. The public hearing will be held at a future meeting, and the property will be posted. RZ-15-05 Panatonic Development Company of Atlanta, Georgia requests a rezoning from RA to M2 manufacturing for the property located at 1409 Highway 42 South in Landlots 198, 199, 218, 219 in the 7th District. The property consists of 318 plus correction, 318.15 acres plus or minus acres, and the request is for an industrial development, District 1. So if you're here for that rezoning request, it will not be heard. Does somebody move? We accept the agenda as published.
So move.
Have a motion District 5.
Second.
Second District 3. Any further discussion? Only favor raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Next, we have a proclamation for the Daughters of the American Revolution designating September the 17th, dash 23 as Constitution Week. And we have two people going. We have our communication director going to read it, and we have Ms. Helen coming up, and you're going to say a few words after the proclamation, and then we'll have a picture. Yes, ma'am? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. This evening, we have a proclamation in honor of Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law; and whereas September 17th, 2013, marks the 226th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention; and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it; and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week; and whereas we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the week of September 17th through the 23rd shall be known as Constitution Week in Henry County, Georgia, during which time we join with other communities across the nation in recognizing the importance of our Constitution and reaffirming our rights and obligations as citizens of this great nation to protect this founding document. And this was signed by Chairman Tommy Smith and attested by Stephanie Braun County Clerk. And we have Helen Buspin with the Daughters of the American Revolution here tonight to talk briefly about this and something else coming up.
Thank you, Melissa. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to recognize Constitution Week. And also, I wanted to make an announcement, if you would, that our D.A.R. chapter, the Andrew McBride chapter, is hosting an event at the Veterans Wall at Heritage Park this Saturday, the 19th, at 11 o'clock, and this is to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. And although this is to honor the Vietnam veterans, the public and the veterans, all veterans are invited. And I want to say to Jim Joyce down at the wall, him and his staff at Heritage Park have been just wonderful for their support in planning this event, as they always are, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's have a picture. We'll have another proclamation, and we'll have a picture, ladies.
Chairman and Commissioners, tonight we have a proclamation designated the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and in recognition of the 25th anniversary of Haven House. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime affecting people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels; and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects all citizens of Henry County and beyond; and whereas children growing up in violent homes are believed to be neglected and abused at a higher rate; and whereas domestic violence costs Henry County millions of dollars annually in medical expenses, sick leave, absenteeism, emergency response, and court costs; and whereas through a coordinated community effort, the Haven House provides safe shelter, legal advocacy, and service for domestic violence victims and their children, and has been doing so for the past 25 years. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of October 2015 be known as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges citizens of Henry County to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners recognizes the important work being done by Haven House in helping those affected by domestic violence, and offers its sincerest appreciation for their outstanding efforts in the community. Signed by Chairman Tommy Smith, attested by Stephanie Braun County Clerk. And we have Marjorie Lacy, who heads up Haven House here with us tonight.
And this is Pandora Palmer, our board president. And I just want to thank the citizens of Henry County for the strong support that they have shown our agency over the years. We have been blessed with help from the Commission and from our community and churches and just really everyone, and we appreciate it. It's an important cause, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman and Commissioners, this is our last proclamation of the evening, and this is a proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Month in Henry County. Whereas the Henry County Fire Department is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our county; and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at greatest risk from fire; and whereas home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2013; and according to the National Fire Protection Association and fire departments in the United States, they responded to more than 369,500 home fires; and whereas when smoke alarms should have operated but did not do so, it was usually because batteries were missing, disconnected, or dead of the home fire deaths resulted from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM when most people are asleep; and whereas three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, and working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half; and whereas Henry County residents are urged to install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home, as well as install alert devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing, and make sure that those alarms are operable with fresh batteries; and whereas Henry County residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire; and whereas Henry County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, enabling Henry County residents to be responsive to public education measures and to take the necessary steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2015 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep, Every Bedroom Needs a Working Smoke Alarm," effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us time to get out safely. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of October 2015 shall be known as Fire Prevention Month, and the week of October 4th through 10th be known as Fire Prevention Week throughout this county, during which time all citizens are urged to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Month and supporting the many public safety efforts of Henry County's Fire Department. And this was signed by Chairman Tommy Smith, attested by Stephanie Braun County Clerk.
I understand that we're not being aired on the computers, so I think we're going to work on it. Seems like inevitable every time we have a meeting, it's either not aired on TV or not on the computer. And I promise you, they flight check it each time, and so I don't have an excuse. Splotch Quarterly Presentation by Capital and Transportation Project Directors. Rocky is the Transportation, and Rod is the Capital Improvements for Splotch. Gentlemen, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners.
Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. The presentation we're going to give is our first presentation on the Splotch Four program. First time Rocky and I went through it, it was a 45 minutes. We're going to endeavor to do that in 15 minutes. What I will tell Commissioners and the public, our presentation will be posted online tomorrow on the Splotch website, so if you want to look on a little bit more detail than we don't cover on all the slides, we ask the citizens to please take your time, go through it, and if you have any questions, please give us a call at the Splotch office. We'll start out with the countywide projects. Countywide, our 911 radio system was currently in the process of evaluating two vendors who have submitted bids, and our next scheduled meeting is 9:22 on the evaluation process. For the ambulances, we have one remount. That remount is complete. There's a picture of it there, and the new ambulance is in process at the purchasing department, and it should be out to bid with the other three ambulances within the next two weeks. Animal Control, at Animal Control, we put in new cameras, the wall epoxy coatings. We put some additional fencing in and some interior doors. That shows the before and after on our coating system. And on the exterior, the security facility, we installed some fencing and a slide gate. Fire Station Capital Equipment, I talked about the three previous ambulances before. Again, they're purchasing the new fire trucks. They're in the bid process also, and within the week, we should have the three fire trucks and the four ambulances out for bid. Fire Station 14, that'll be the first one we'll put out to bid mid-October. This one's going to be located on Hampton Locust Grove Road, and this is a rendering of what the station's going to look like. The next fire station, all the fire stations have been designed. All the fire stations are either been approved through the planning department, or they're in the process right now. Station 15 will be located on North Mount Carmel, which will be on the North Mount Carmel Station 16 is the Kellytown area. That station will be on the current Kellytown property. That station, again, has been designed, and this is what the station on 16 is going to look like in Kellytown. Our line item for Henry County DOT construction equipment, they've expended funds on this broom. They're currently evaluating for the remainder of the funds of buying a material transfer Jail renovations we have going on is new camera systems, access controls to the doors, plumbing renovations, and upgrading the fixtures, the plumbing fixtures.
We have also the new interchange on I-75. Feasibility study has been completed and submitted to G-DOT. And that's a rendering of the four locations, proposed locations.
The police patrol vehicles, 15 of them are currently in operation. The remaining 15 has been purchased, and by mid-October, they'll be in service. So we'll have all 30 vehicles in service. Sewer to the airport, on the right-hand side, you'll see the conceptual design for the location of the sewer to the airport. The sewer to Fairview, again, it's just like with the airport, it's in design right now with the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority, and on the right, it shows the preliminary location for that sewer. For a summary of the countywide projects, we're currently working on or completed 13 of the 17 countywide projects. District 1. Fire Station Number 2 is out to bid, and we'll receive the bids back on October the 8th. Tanger Ball fields, it's in progress. Concession building, the sports lighting has been complete. This shows the completed fields with the new concession building and the meeting building on the left.
District 1, major transportation, we have McDonough Parkway from Henry Parkway to Stair道20 and 81. Concept has been completed, and preliminary design is underway. On intersection improvements, three out of three projects are completed or in progress. Here we have the roundabout concept for the South Bethany and Old Jackson. And this is Stair道81 at Mount Bethel Wind Road. It's under construction. We're about 95% complete. Paving was going on this past weekend. Striping will be next, and it's a shared project with District 3. On dirt roads, two out of five projects in progress. Harris Drive is under construction. Lester Mill, we're currently acquiring roadway. We have about 60% of the roadway acquired on this project. Lester Mill is about three and a half miles long. On District 1, bridge improvements, we have one out of five projects in progress. Jackson Lake over Mackey Creek is a shared project also with District 3. Resurfacing, we have three projects, three roads completed. One of them has been Ingram Slade. I'd like to thank DOT on all the paving and resurfacing that they've been doing for the Splotch program. Just a summary for District 1, two out of three capital projects in progress, and seven of 16 transportation projects in progress.
District 2. It's the Senior Rec Center in Hampton. It's at 56th McDonald Street, which would be right across the street from the New Fortson Library. It's currently in design. This is a rendering of what the building's going to look like.
District 2, intersection improvements, five of six projects in progress. Jodico Road at Blackhall Road is a roundabout. Preliminary plans were submitted to G-DOT this past Monday. More additional intersection improvements. This is Mount Carmel Chambers, it's a roundabout. A concept completed. Preliminary plans in progress. District 2, dirt roads, eight of 10 projects completed or in progress. Again, we have a lot of surface treatment projects completed, thanks to the County DOT. Farmer Drive, that's a typical surface treatment project. Another surface treatment project completed was Jones Road. Man Olive Road, it was a dirt road, and it was paid by the County DOT using Splotch Bridge improvements for District 2, five of five projects in progress. Want to mention Black Hall over Rum Creek, that's a Georgia DOT project, and they will be having hopefully a public information meeting in late November or early December. On resurfacing, seven roads have been completed. There's one, Manly Drive, was one of them. As a summary for District 2, one of two capital projects in progress, 18 of 23 transportation projects completed or in progress.
District 3 update. Heritage Park improvements included steps and handrails to the upper parking lot and a sidewalk with handrails going to the veteran wall. At North Old Park, installed a new three, four-year-old tee ball field.
On the major transportation, one of two in progress. McDonough Parkway from Stair道42 to Stair道155, preliminary design in progress. That's a rendering of the concept. On intersection improvements, seven of nine projects complete or in progress. East Lake at Stair道20 is a joint project with District 4. It's under construction. Currently working on utility relocations, and it's going to take about three or four months for all utilities to be relocated. There's additional intersection improvements. Jodico Road at Old Grove Road, we're going to be adding a right turning lane on Old Grove. Preliminary plans in progress. Lake Dow Rogers at Roser. Concept completed, working on preliminary plans for the roundabout. On dirt roads for District 3, six out of seven projects complete or in progress. All surface treatments have been completed. Turner Circle will be started in October. That's Escue Road, surface treatment completed by DOT. Bridge improvements, two of four projects in progress. One of them, Elliot Road, that's also a G-DOT project. On resurfacing, we have 10 roads completed. Summary for District 3, two of three capital projects complete or in progress, 16 of 22 transportation projects complete or in progress.
District 4 update. The Bud Kelly Park is currently under construction, and completion is April 1st of next year.
Intersection improvements, three of four projects in progress. One of them is Banks at Rock Quarry. Project is completed, except the signal. We're just waiting for power, so we can flash the signal for seven days to be operational. We also have the Stair道138 at Hamp Hill. Preliminary plans have been completed and submitted to G-DOT for a permit. On dirt roads, one of two projects in progress. Elliot Road, this is the concept. We're going to have a public information meeting September 29th at the East Lake Lamentary School from 6 to 8. Resurfacing for District 4, eight roads complete or in progress. That's one of the roads that have been completed by DOT, and they striped it. A summary for District 4, one of two capital projects in progress, four of 11 transportation projects in progress.
District 5. The new District 5 park, the design is in progress. Be submitting for plan review on the site the end of this month. Construction, possibly the first possibly the first week, if not earlier than that, in October.
On Major Transportations, we have two of three projects in progress. One of them is Ambo Block Road widening. The other one is the West Village Parkway, which was previously called West Panola. Intersection improvements, we have one of three projects in progress. East Atlanta at Thurman and Flat Rock is a concept design in progress. As a summary for District Five, one of two capital projects in progress, three of nine transportation projects in progress. As a project status summary, on capital projects, total projects, twenty-eight capital projects total, projects completed two, projects in progress eighteen. On the transportation, total projects are eighty-two. Twelve projects have been completed, and thirty-seven are in progress. And that will complete our presentation. I just want to let you know that all this is for the last, with less than a year and a half, on the six-year program, thus, this is the update that we have, and we'll be providing an update every, we'll try to do an update every three months, hopefully not as long as this one.
That's a good presentation, thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? I yield the floor to you.
First of all, thank you so much for giving us an update, because I think that's helpful for the citizens to kind of see behind the curtain, because, you know, we passed the SPOS, and we appreciate the citizens working on, and even the committee members that worked on it, and then you don't see a lot happening, and you go, what's going on? So I think this is much needed. I do wanna, you know, and I know we've traded some emails, so you guys won't be shocked, and I'm gonna ask this specifically to you, Rocky. When I look at, the Finance Director sends us reports of our collections, and you know, we bonded some money and some other things, because it was very effective at the time, it seemed like, to get things off the ground. But we do have kind of a reverse arbitrage situation, the fact that we have cash in the bank, and we're not earning anything on it, meanwhile, we're paying interest on debt. Is there any, you know, and I've asked you guys, is there any way to accelerate? I know in my district, we have lots of resurfacing money. Can we go ahead and accelerate the expenditure of those things? Because cost of construction goes up and other things, and I've traded some emails with you guys, but I just wanted to see, give you a chance to express it to the public, because I think if we outsourced some of that, if, because I recognize, Helen, you guys, when you're overloaded with all the stuff that we just went over, why not throw this out to the private sector to let them have a hand in it as well?
And we have, Commissioner, actually, Terry's gonna bring a resolution later today, where we have gone ahead and put out more resurfacing, using SPOS money. In addition, we're looking at actually some of District One, bridge rehabs, we already have put that one out for design bid. Those were supposed to be on the twenty-eighteen year, so we went ahead and put those ahead of schedule. We're gonna be looking at also spending more resurfacing money, using Henry County as well, outsourcing, I think we've got one coming, like I mentioned a moment ago, coming back for board approval on that, just to expedite, because we do see that, we are getting an increase in revenue, but we're also seeing an increase in construction as well. So the more we can, we can put this, put the design quicker and design quicker, and we, actually, some of the design concepts have come earlier, so we're moving forward with the design, and we're calling the engineers and telling them we need to get this as soon as possible, because we can see that next summer, construction is gonna be much higher, just because of GDOT and all that additional gas, fuel monies, that funding that they will have.
The only other question I had, just because we went through this, I understand the time was important, so we had to move through it rather quickly. The Luella Fire Station, looked like it's going to bid in the next month, did I read that correct?
That's correct.
And then, when we, Mount Carmel, Station Fifteen, when was that slated to go to bid? How far out are we from that project kicking in? Because I've had citizens calling about that one as well.
Commissioner, I want to say that one's nine to ten months after.
Okay.
Okay? And again, I'll get you that exact date on that one. But what we did, and again, we went through it pretty fast, when I came to the board for the design, all of the stations are, have been designed, okay? And all of the stations are either in plan review or, or have been reviewed, okay, for a building permit. And like Rocky was saying, okay, if we expedite some of these, we, it's ready to go, so when we're ready to pull the trigger, everything is there, it's just a matter of putting it on the street and bidding it.
Okay.
Anybody else, District Five?
I recall seeing Fervive Road. Can you give us an update on where we are with the Stump Con Creek intersections, the streetlights, and the medians as well?
Just, just because I knew you were gonna ask me. You didn't ask me, but I knew. We actually got some additional slides that we took out, because of timing, but I got them here. Fervive, if you're familiar with the area, you've been out there recently, we've done all the paving on Fervive. And there's some pictures here. All the signals are in place, we're waiting on power on Ambo Block, but everything else has, has been installed. The next step is gonna be the lighting, and also the landscaping, and also the crosswalk and striping. So the strippers were out there, actually, we were, actually, Ron and I were up there yesterday, and the stripper was out there putting the arrows and doing all the handwork, but it's gonna take some time, it's almost two miles long, so there's a lot of handwork that they gotta do. So hopefully, within the next month to six weeks, all of it will be completed. Roadwise, of course, the landscaping will wait till about early October, when the weather turns better for, for planting season.
Rob, I think I heard you say construction was gonna start on a new park in October, was that a mistake, or?
That's a bid.
Okay, all right, just wanted to double check. October sounds good, though.
District One.
Ron, did you mention that new interchange?
The new interchange on I-75?
Right.
Yes, sir.
You did, okay.
Yes, it's, we have submitted the feasibility study that the board approved last previous meeting, it's been submitted to GDOT for their approval. Once GDOT approves the feasibility, then the federal highway has to approve it as well, so we can go to the next step.
Okay. I thought you did, I wanted to make sure. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions from the board?
Let me ask Ron. Where do we stand on the North Old Park, far as meeting with the Board of Education? Have we got that, those issues?
We have, Commissioner, I don't mean, we have a preliminary design, we're trying to fine-tune that, because they're gonna be looking for actual property lines. If you could give me less than two weeks, okay, we'll have something that we can present and say, this, with this design, this is the exact property, and this is what the access is gonna be into it.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you so much.
Rocky and I'd like to take just one second, and we want to thank our staff, okay? We have a phenomenal staff. There's a lot of stuff going on, like someone has said, maybe you don't see this, but I'm speaking for Rocky and myself, again, our staff, kudos to them, great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments, citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, etc., that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. Taking it in the order that they was given, Mr. Chris Painter, gonna talk about employee and harassment. If you would, come to the podium and state your name, please.
My name is Chris Painter, I live in McDonough. Thank you Chairman and Commissioners. I would like to take a few minutes to talk about the employees, the respect, and harassment. Respect is not freely given but earned. I lived in the county for nineteen years, and was with the county for seventeen years. I miss the time when you could freely walk into Jim Risher's office or Rudy Oliver's with a problem and be heard. Over the, over the past eighteen years, I have worked in, worked in several of the Commissioners and County Managers' homes during repairs. Let me clear that up first. I did not do that on county time, and I did not use county supplies. But as a respected maintenance technician, and a specialist in my field, in two thousand and three, I got very sick, it was in Emory Hospital. I woke up from my nap in the hospital to find a Commissioner standing over me, he had brought me a tray of cookies. I left the county at that time to put things in order in my life. I returned eleven months later and was rehired. I loved my job, but things were changing. Employees were soon not heard anymore, their complaints were not being, were being ignored, no one was listening to the employees. Now let's talk about facility maintenance, and its problems. In two thousand and six, Facility Maintenance had twenty-one employees. Now it has fifteen employees, and twice the plant. This puts undue stress on the department and these employees. Which leads to problems, people start to get the "I don't cares," and the "blank you" and "blank them" attitudes. Angie Bailey did a no harassment policy letter that state, that said, I quote, "The policy-defined harassment is including offensive language, jokes, or other verbal, graphic, or physical conduct related to an employee, it's race, sex, religion, color, natural origins, state, disabilities, or other factors protected by the laws which make the responsible person." But this continued in our department, the offensive language did not stop, it got worse. Our department had, when upset, would call a meeting, and the first words were sexually-based curse words. I went to two County Managers and two Acting County Managers to solve this. I was supposed to do that, and that's what I did. First, Rod McNaggy told me, "I am new, give me time to look at this." Second, Michael Harris told me, "How can I correct him when the Commissioners do the same thing?" Jim Walker told me, "He backs his sergeants," and it happened before he got there, but it continued. And sorry, Ms. Sherry, but you kept canceling our meetings and did not take me serious when I told you our department had needed to clean up his language, as well as other severe issues. As for our department had cursed me for the last time in August, and I had enough, and I argued back, and lost my job. This may not happen if one of these four would have followed policies of harassment and done their job. In closing, I asked the Commissioners and the County Manager to talk to the employees, and truly listen to the employees, because who knows better than them? But then protect them from retribution. One of the last words Mike Keable said to me was, "I know you went behind my back." Thank you and God bless. P.S., please look hard at Facility Maintenance and other departments, they are truly overworked, understaffed, this does cause stress on the employees, because the employees do care. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we recognize Mr. Steve Richardson, Corruption.
Steve Richardson, Two-O-Seven, Wind Drive. Commissioners, it has now been four weeks since you were made aware of the acts of public corruption here in Henry County, with a mountain of irrefutable evidence against Angie Soro, Nedra Smith, and Sherry Matthews, they still have their jobs and haven't been suspended or terminated. The biggest question I have is why? Chairman Smith, when a completely ridiculous and unsubstantiated allegation was made against the former County Manager, you held an executive session, appointed your own hand-picked investigator, placed a former manager on administrative leave, contacted the media, and sent phone calls and text messages, excuse me, to your buddies Bill Tony and Jennifer Rosenbaum, all within two hours. I guess none of these women were on the Tommy Smith hit list like former County Manager Walker, Commissioner Preston, Senator Jeffries, Tax Commissioner Curry, Police Chief Nichols, or Finance Director Allieta, or any of the other people Tommy Smith despises. I bet if this corruption involved any of the people, Chairman Smith, you would have done something immediately other than sit on your hands and pass the buck to the County Attorney after three weeks. I also find it interesting that only Chairman Smith gets quoted in the local paper. Are you paying the paper off to Chairman Smith? Because the rest of you Commissioners avoid the media and let the Chairman spin the stories to make it look like he is the one person actually doing something, which we all know he isn't. Had I not spoken up about this scandal, excuse me, it would have gone ignored. Tommy Smith is nate deep in the corruption, and none of this would have backbone the investigators' actions, because none of you want to be next on the hit list. Let me tell you what I've discovered since the last meeting. The backdoor pay raises are much bigger than the sweetheart deal they gave Shay Mathis. So far, I have thirty, about thirty other pay raise copies orchestrated by Soro, Smith, and Mathis between May tenth and June thirtieth, of the year totaling in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. These raises were conveniently given before the three percent pay raise that all employees got that took effect July first. Doing the math, these double-raised employees received about eight point one-five percent pay raises, and all it on a taxpayer dime. Tonight, I want to tell you about two of these pay raises that are the most disturbing. The first is Budget Director Angie Soro. This is the basic example I know of letting the fox guard the hen house. Budget Director Soro orchestrated her own pay raise over the other department heads and employees. She knew she would get three percent raise on July first, like everyone else, because she is the person who built the county budget. But she sweetened the deal for herself with an extra five percent pay raise. Look at the copy of the personnel action from awarding her raise from eighty-six thousand to ninety thousand. Angie Soro originally filed this on February the ninth, two thousand and fifteen. It was signed by Director Smith on April the eighth, and approved by Acting County Manager Sherry Matthews on May twenty-fifth. Here's the interesting part, the former County Manager resigned on May tenth, and only days after, Ms. Soro got her four thousand dollar pay raise from, from Ms. Matthews. If you read the investigation report completed on the former County Manager, only two people made derogatory comments against him. One person was Rod Gray, who recanted his story when he was told he was gonna have to testify under oath, and the other was Angie Soro. At first, I thought Angie Soro was just covering her tracks, because the accused in the case should have never been hired by Ms. Soro without a background check, and because she was also the future daughter-in-law of Ms. Soro's best friend, payroll clerk Gina Vance. But now we know that Ms. Soro had a financial reason in seeing the former County Manager resign. The truth is, from February to May, the former County Manager refused to give Ms. Soro a pay raise, and she sold him out with lies and innuendo for an additional four thousand dollars in her paycheck. Angie Soro supervises only one employee, and makes just under ninety-three thousand dollars a year with a high school education. Henry County has department heads with master's degrees, and who supervise a dozen employees that make tens of thousands of dollars less than Ms. Soro. How can this be? Well, it's easy, when you put Ms. Soro in charge of moving the money around the county budget, how can the EU Commissioners trust her knowing what she is doing behind your backs? The scarier part is she has done what she's done here, what can she do in the future? The other pay raise that disturbs me is Chitara McKinney of the Transit Department, because she's also Sherry Matthews' sister. If I'm correct, Acting County Manager Matthews' husband, sister, and brother-in-law all work for the county with jobs she helped them get. Now her sister has a significant pay raise from twenty-five thousand to twenty-nine thousand, plus her three percent. Now please notice how Ms. Matthews did not personally sign this form, but let her partners in crime, Nedra Smith and Andrew Soro, process it anyway. Two other points, I know of police officers who were suspended for derogatory comments posted on their Facebook. Well, HR Director Nedra Smith announced on Facebook that she is at war here in Hooterville with the powers that be, that she hasn't been suspended. How can that be? Tonight, I want to remind Ms. Smith that we, the taxpayers here in Hooterville, sign her paycheck, so please don't insult us any further. Finally, in the next meeting, I'm gonna lay out all the open records requests made by Bill Tony, and prove that Chairman Smith was funneling Mr. Tony information from county employee emails by unethically spying with the help of Shay Mathis. I'm also gonna expose the backdoor deal, employment contract Chairman Smith gave Human Resources.
Thank you so much. Next, we'd hear from Mr. Elton Alexander, County Manager Position and Politics.
I'm Elton Alexander, Nine-Twenty Maple Leaf Drive, McDonough, Georgia, and I come before you tonight to say enough of the politics in Henry County. We're at the selection process for the County Manager Position. First of all, our interim County Manager has done a fantastic job. We haven't skipped a beat with the, of resignation of County Manager- We haven't skipped a beat with the, of resignation of County Manager Walker. The county has been well-run, well-maintained, and at a, at a high level, at an extremely high level. We have got to get beyond the Chicago political machine tactics, backroom, throwing people up under the bus, trying to discredit people, and ruin people's career. We've done that too, too many times, and it seems good people, it's, we can't keep good people and we can't build a world-class county when we're attacking people personally, viciously, on social media, back channel, every which way that we possibly can. We are better than this as a county, and I'm challenging everybody up here to, to raise the standards of how we conduct business here in Henry County. We're better than this. We have an outstanding person on the job right now that has been dedicated, that has given great service to our community. To see women, and I, and I noticed that each one of the people attacked was women. We deserve better than this, and we need to understand two things. That we, in, in the year two thousand and fifteen, we need to respect the work of our women in this community. It is unacceptable to set aside and to use these political tricks to try to discourage them. If you look at Ms. Swift's record, it's outstanding. It's impeccable. But all of a sudden, we get here to Henry County and all of a sudden, we got problems. No, we don't. We got people who don't understand the process trying to interpret it. Anyone understanding the process would understand that, no, we did not give Shay Mathis a, a raise that was undue. We protected the county from new litigation, from illegally lowering someone's salary out of turn. It was totally wrong, and the right decision was made to protect the taxpayers versus making the county liable for yet another round of litigation. When you're looking at these departments, I could go around and I could pick out all the different performance enhancements. I could look at every last one of them. I could try to grade them. I could try to break it down. But we have professionals running these departments. What we're trying to do is micromanage them. We give them a budget. We turn it over to them. We allow them to run it. As long as they're operating inside those guidelines, we can't micromanage them from this position right here. You cannot look for every little issue that may come up. You cannot take something out of context. If you have a thousand reviews and you find five that, that possibly could have looked suspicious. How about weighing the other nine hundred and ninety-five instead of looking at the five and making a complete judgment on what was going? There's never been a question of integrity of any of the people that have been charged here. Shay Mathis, outstanding county employee, long-term. Sherry Matthews, Sherry Hobson Matthews, long-term county employee, impeccable reputation in the county, yet all of a sudden, at the time, when it's time for her to ascend to the position that she deserves, an issue all of a sudden shows up out of the blue. We understand politics, but we understand political courage and will. We got to do better than that. We have political, we have political operatives that come to this mic on a regular basis and speak to, oh, election is now around, coming around next year. Let it be known that the progressive strength in Henry County is growing. And in some of those tight elections coming up, in those tight elections, crossover votes might make the difference in a tight election. We're watching. We're paying attention, and we're not going to stand for having our people treated any kind of way. We're not going to stand for it. You're going to do better. We're going to demand it, and we're going to have a fair, open, honest, and transparent process in the selection of the right person for this job, and that's Sherry Hobson Matthews.
Consent agenda, the following agenda items shall be considered on the consent agenda before voted on the consent agenda item. The chairman will provide opportunity to add or delay. Public safety. Resolution authorizing the purchase of uniform for the Henry County Fire Department. Does anybody like to add to or delete from the consent agenda? If not, somebody move, we approve it. Have a motion District One, Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Public safety. Resolution awarding bid for medical-grade oxygen used by the Henry County Fire Department. Chief Lacy.
Good evening. The resolution, resolution that you have before you this evening is to award the bid for the purchase of medical-grade oxygen. This is the oxygen we use in treating patients on an annual basis throughout the county. Two vendors submitting contracts for this, or, or proposals for this, rather, and we have awarded, awarded the bid, as you see here, to the lowest and most responsive of those.
Anybody have any questions? Not, we have a resolution in the book. Resolution, Board of Commissioners awarding a bid to medical-grade oxygen. Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion District Three, Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed amendment to the CDBG twenty thirteen Annual Action Plan and Approval. Proposed Amendment, Benny Allen. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Tonight, I present to you a proposed amendment to the CDBG FY two thousand and thirteen Annual Action Plan. The city of Stockbridge has decided at this time to reprogram one hundred and fifty thousand dollars previously prescribed for community pool activity. Instead, the city is seeking to utilize the funds to construct two inclusive playgrounds located at Memorial Park and Clark Community Park, both located within city limits of I do have renderings of these parks to give you a conceptual idea of what the inclusive playground will look like. That is Memorial Park. And to give you an idea of what inclusive playground equipment is, it's basically designed for children of all abilities and specifically for children with special needs. This is a rendering of conceptual community, Clark Community Park. At a City of Stockbridge Council Retreat in June of this year, Henry County Community Development Staff met with the City of Stockbridge staff and also the council members of the City of Stockbridge to brainstorm on ways to utilize these funds to, to come up with the CDBG-eligible activity. Construction of the inclusive playground equipment in the two parks was the activity that the city decided to move forward on. The Henry County Community Development Staff did receive a letter from the City of Stockbridge and an email requesting this amendment. Because the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars has already been approved in the FY two thousand Action Plan, the, and the city is ready to move with this, this will, will also assist the Henry County Community Development Department in expending the CDBG funds in a timely fashion.
Question for you.
Yes.
Do those funds be separated equally between the parks?
At the moment, that has, looking at, at the, the renderings, that would have to be decided once procurement and all has, has been established.
So are these the actual renderings for, for both parks?
These are the renderings that, that were, that were provided by the City of Stockbridge.
So if I'm looking at the rendering and, you know, this exact rendering will be at both parks, that it looks like it costs a lot less than about seventy-five thousand if they're looking at splitting that one fifty and a half. So given the fact that they're, we're moving forward with repurposing that one fifty to the City of Stockbridge, if there's any overage, will that come back to the county or will we invest in more park equipment for those two parks?
If I could, sir, in addition to the park equipment, there are also expenses for clearing property, and there's also paving for new parking lot. So there are additional expenses, but the main portion of it is to enhance the park and to create a safe playground that is accessible for children of all developmental needs.
So their money will be split equally between the two parks?
Not necessarily. The actual cost of the project is much greater than the one fifty. I don't have the exact amount that the city is also contributing, but the city will be using CDBG funding in addition to city funds for both of the parks.
All right. District One.
Do you have any future plans for doing some other parks like that in Locust Grove?
We have not spoken with the city in regards to any parks, but we are definitely open to that idea if the city is interested. We can look at utilizing CDBG for that.
Sandy Ridge Park's not in the city, it's what I was speaking of.
Tell me the name again.
Sandy Ridge Park.
Okay.
We've just done some repaving and built a new building and done, done a bunch of work down there, and I'd like to see some stuff down that way, too.
We'll definitely contact the city to inquire about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, I'm going to open the floor up for fifteen minutes for anybody that would like to be recognized to make any public comments on this proposed amendment to the CDBG twenty thirteen Annual Plan and Approval of the Proposed Amendment. We recognize the Honorable County Manager Stockbridge. Good evening, Mr. Harris.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. First, I want to thank Mr. Allen and Ms. Sanio. They've done a great job of kind of helping guide us along through this process. So we're very appreciative for all their efforts in helping bring this to fruition. Mr. Allen's done a great job in the presentation. He's, he's said exactly what it is we're looking to do. We've had the one hundred and fifty thousand, it's been out there, programmed for a number of years now. We're trying to work in conjunction with our, with our CDBG program to put these funds in an area that we have a project we're ready to move forward with. So certainly to help with the timeliness constraints that CDBG has to meet, we felt this was an ideal project to help meet those guidelines. To address Commissioner Holmes's question, I think Ms. Sanio said, hit some of the key points. The funding will be, it's, it's not necessarily split equally because the size of the parks are slightly different. One park in one area, you know, the size of the proposed playground area will be, will be commensurate with the size of the park itself. Clark Park is far bigger than Memorial Park, so that area would likely be slightly bigger than what's proposed over at the area of Memorial Park. And again, the equipment cost is only part of it. There are, you know, some grading costs that's associated with it. One of the key expenses with a playground of this nature is the surface itself. Because it's an all-weather surface, an all-access surface, being able to be, have access for wheelchair accessibility, it's a far more expensive surface. So what you, what you've seen here, what Mr. Allen has presented, those are renderings. They're not final concepts as of yet. We're still going through the process. But again, we, we certainly appreciate all the assistance that we've received so far from the CDBG folks, and we just hope that the, the Commissioners are supportive of this project as well.
My question.
Yes.
I think these funds are from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen.
Thirteen.
Okay. So two thousand and fourteen and this year, it seems like the City of Stockbridge, there were some opportunities for you guys to take advantage of more CDBG funding. Is there, are there any plans to, to submit in the future for?
There are. I think Ms. Sanio has those, can give more detail on those. I think the sidewalks.
Yes, sir. In the two thousand and fifteen Annual Action Plan, which you all did approve back in June, the city had an, a project for sidewalks. There will be an extension to existing sidewalks in the city in a low-to-moderate-income area.
And which area is that?
That is South Berry Street in the Thai Street community.
This is actually a continuation of a previous CDBG project in that same area. Phase one, we did sidewalks in, in an area that meets the guidelines. This is an extension of that project. So again, we're seeking the same.
Does anybody else like to be heard for this? This is a public hearing portion. If you do, raise your hand. Okay, if not, I'm going to determine that the public hearing portion of this CBG twenty thirteen has been, we've just met requirements. So having said that, the public hearing is completed. Now, continue your dialogue. This is a discussion and answer, so continue where you're at.
You were speaking about some?
Oh, this is a continuation of the phase one of the South Berry Street Sidewalk Project.
In addition, I've also met with city council members as well as Mr. Harris discussing potential projects. Specifically, we don't have any to bring before the board at this time, but the council is discussing other future projects.
Shannon, a couple of months ago, you had some concerns regarding the CDBG funding that we weren't utilizing the funds. So can you discuss that a little, in a little more detail?
Yes, sir. With the Community Development Block Grant Program, there is a timeliness schedule, and it is a requirement annually. Our timeliness test is in May of each year. If the CDBG program does not expend adequate funding prior to that test, there, this program is at risk of losing funds. With that, we work diligently to ensure that projects, excuse me, are carried out in a timely manner and that those funds are expended appropriately and on eligible activities. If projects stay on the books too long, we encourage the recipients to consider other ideas in which they may be more ready to move forward with at that time that may be more shovel-ready.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or question? If not, we have a resolution in the book. Board of Commissioners of Henry County approving amendments to the FY two thousand and thirteen Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program. Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion from District Five. Second District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing to consider approval of the proposed Federal Year two thousand and fourteen Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report and authorize the, to submit the report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And Shannon, good evening.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. As a recipient of CDBG program funding, Henry County is required to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, commonly known as CAPR, for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. Our CAPR provides HUD and the residents of Henry County an opportunity to evaluate the overall progress of the CDBG program in carrying out priorities and specific objectives identified in the consolidated plan and the annual action plans. It also describes actions and changes and accomplishments during the two thousand and fourteen program year that resulted from the use of CDBG funding. Staff published a public notice for the draft two thousand and fourteen CAPR in the Saturday, August twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen edition of the Henry Daily Herald and announced its fifteen-day public comment period. Copies of the draft CAPR have been made available for public review at numerous public locations as of Thursday, August twenty-seventh, and on the county's website. To date, no comments have been received regarding the draft CAPR. Presented with the agenda item is a draft copy of the CAPR as of September first. Staff will, has continued to work on that. In summary, ten projects were completed in program year two thousand and fourteen, and four projects are currently ongoing. The completed projects have expended a total of, let's see, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars with a total of fourteen thousand, with a total of fourteen thousand and fifty Henry County residents benefiting from CDBG activities in two thousand and fourteen.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
How many recipients do you have on the program?
I didn't hear you, sir. I apologize.
How many recipients do you have on the program?
It varies each year. For 2014, I believe we had six public services. And the projects with the municipalities are still ongoing for 2014. We had three public facility projects that were carried out with public, with nonprofits, I'll say. But, the municipality projects are still ongoing. And we also completed two projects with, through force account, which is Henry County staff.
Anybody else have any questions? I want to open the floor up for public comments. This is a public hearing to consider the approval of the proposed federal year 2014 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Anybody like to be heard? Come to the podium, state your name, and I'll give a total of 15 minutes. Seeing none, I'll ask again. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to be heard at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to declare that the public hearing portion of this issue, I declare that it is taking place, met the requirements. We have a resolution in the book FY 2014 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Community Development Block Grant. Somebody would consider moving in that direction. Have a motion, District one. Second District four. Any further discussion? If you're in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution awarding bid for food products and supplies for the senior citizens service department for fiscal year 2016. Ms. Reed, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I'm seeking approval for the resolution in front of you. It is to award the contract for the purchase of food products and supplies for our meal program.
Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution in the Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding the food product and supply bid for the senior citizens service department for fiscal year 2016. Somebody move in that direction?
Move.
Have a motion, District two. Second District three. Any further discussion? If you're in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution approving the task order number six. Land acquisition assistance supplemental appraisal, additional service required by Croy Engineering pertaining to Phase Two of the runway expansion at, it says Atlanta Regional Airport, but the name is probably hadn't been changed yet, but it's the Henry County Airport. The name changes. Understand it was an oversight. Somebody didn't file the paperwork, but it's been filed now. It's probably 18 months from two or three months ago. So, Mr. Michael Tony, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Presenting to you a resolution approving task order number six, which is services that were identified by Croy Engineering and required by GDOT pertaining to Phase Two of the runway expansion to Atlanta South Regional Airport. As some background on it, the board, as you're aware, approved a resolution number 1493 on April 15, 2014, which included expenses in the amount of $103,835 pertaining to that Phase Two runway expansion project. And a few months later in September of the same year, resolution was approved, number 14232, which approved Croy Engineering to provide the engineering services for that project. Moving forward to today, they've identified that additional services were needed out there and was required by GDOT in the amount of $4,600 for the supplemental property appraisal and review appraisal for the required property for the Atlanta Motor Speedway. This work is eligible for 90% reimbursement through the FAA and you see the funding breakdown as follows below on the exhibit or summary. And just request approval of those services.
Anybody have any comments or questions? District one.
Is that just, I noticed a lump sum of $4,600?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I noticed on here, they have an hourly rate schedule, but that's not taken into consideration. It's just a flat rate?
Yes, sir. That should be the case in this, not unless some additional services are identified. But, yes, sir, it should be $4,600.
Yeah, I didn't notice on the hourly rate that they were on there. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? District two.
I'm just approving the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving a task order number six. Land acquisition assistance supplemental appraisal, additional services required by Croy Engineering pertaining Phase Two of the runway expansion. Second from District three. Any further discussion? If you're in favor, motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you, Michael. Recycling. Resolution awarding the contract for waste and wood grinding services for the Henry County Recycling Center. Mr. McMichael.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. Our Henry County Recycling Center receives a large amount of yard waste, including limbs, stumps, brush, from our citizens daily. This accumulated waste wood needs to be ground and removed from the site. Having a contract for the grinding and removal allows quick access and guarantees, of course, prices that will remain firm for one year. This request was bid through the purchasing department and posted on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace and ACCG GLGA. Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Georgia Team Marketplace and by email, with seven vendors responding. Trees and More Incorporated was the overall low bidder for the grinding on-site and removal of debris. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Have a resolution, the Board of Commissioners awarding a contract for waste wood grinding services for the Henry County Recycling Center. Somebody move in that direction?
Move.
Have a motion, District one. Second District three. Any further discussion? If you're in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution awarding a bid 16-15 for materials and field testing services for cement stabilized reclaimed base.
Testing services for cement stabilized reclaimed base required to ensure proper construction of our full-depth reclamation roads as per approved mixed designs. What you're going to see in this is this is just a resolution to pass the testing of the full-depth reclamation roads. We're going to have two bids, hopefully we'll award in a minute. This will be the testing service for each of those following bids. So, we put all of those together so we could have one award for all the testing that we're going to do this year in our full-depth reclamation to get a better price. So, it's a combination of a couple of bids that will be coming up in just a moment.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Have a resolution in the book. Got the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for materials and field testing services. Somebody move in that direction? Have a motion, District two. Second District three. Any further discussion? If you're in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution awarding a bid 16-14 for resurfacing and cement stabilized base reclamation construction.
Henry County DOT compiled our annual list of roads to be done using all of the L-MIG, which is our local maintenance improvement grant funds and SPOS for resurfacing funds. Again, we use both of those funds to do resurfacing, both Georgia DOT funds and SPOS. In order to complete this list of roads in a timely manner and expedite certain roads, we put together a bid package with nine roads in it. Seven other roads require full-depth reclamation. Then, will be overlaid with new pavement. The other two roads will just be resurfaced. In addition, we included any shoulder building, grassing, milling and striping as required to do those roads in the contract. As mentioned earlier, when SPOS made their presentation, when we come up with a list of roads this year to be done, we, in order to complete that list in a more timely manner and efficient manner, basically to get more work done in a year, is why we're contracting out. So, the citizens will know, our DOT and the forces will still be doing a full year's worth of resurfacing. This is in addition to what we could accomplish the remainder of this year. So, it is a process that we're doing to enhance and to do more through the SPOS money, to get these projects moving. And Rocky is absolutely correct. What we saw on these bids, there is some increase in pricing. So, I think that the more work we get done now, we're going to get it done cheaper. So, sooner the better. In the end, I think we'll be saving money to expedite some of these projects. So, this is the first award of that, that we've seen that we have bid out resurfacing that supplements, I might add, what our DOT crews would normally be doing. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Any questions or comments? Yes, sir. District three.
Terry, I know we're putting this out to bid now, but I mean, are we going to have time before winter gets here to get these roads done?
Yes, sir, I think so. We, I believe we give them 90 days in there. And by the time, if the board awards it, they get their bonds and insurance in. They should be starting 1st of October. That gives them October, November. We give them 90 days, depending on what it is. If they don't make it, then, you know, if weather prohibits them, we'll stop the clock and then they'll just finish as soon as the weather gets available. But, with decent weather, and I can't predict the weather, but if we have a reasonable fall, we hope to get this work done this fall. It will be tight.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? We have a resolution in the book award a bid number 16-14 for resurfacing and cement stabilized base reclamation construction. Have a motion, District three. Second District one. Any further discussion? If you're in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution awarding a bid 16-13 for unit price bid for cement stabilized base reclamation construction authorized purchase. To approve all purchase orders request for full depth reclamation FDR that exceed the $10,000 limit.
Yes, sir. This is the full-depth reclamation bid for work that the county will be resurfacing all of these roads. So, this is the list of projects that we are doing, that Henry County DOT is doing. This is the reclamation work that will be done on those roads. This last one we just did will be work done by the contractor. This full-depth reclamation will be for the roads that our crews will be doing. Again, this was bid out. Four vendors responded. Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction submitted the lowest overall bid with a total cost of $584,855. We recommend award. We have had a lot of projects done with Atlanta paving and they have done a very good job in the past. So, we recommend approval of this low bidder.
I have a question for council. It says now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Henry County award bid number 16-13 to Atlanta Paving and Concrete in the amount of $584,855 to complete roadway, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And purchasing, to approve all purchase orders request for a full FDR that exceed $10,000 limits. So, if that's one bid for $584, would that, are y'all going to subbid some of this out? Is that...
No, sir. What purpose of that? I think I can answer that question. The purpose of that is each project is, the amount of money for each project is designated. If that cost goes over $10,000 every time a project goes over $10,000, they award that, we have to bring it back to the board. This is just language put in there. So, if any of the project costs go over $10,000, I don't have to come back to you again.
If we approve the $584,855, then you can't, you can only $10,000 that limits until you get to that amount. Is that correct?
Some of these projects are going to go over $10,000, way over $10,000. This is just a way of getting the, when we get purchase orders, we have to break up the purchase orders for each project. If that purchase order went over $10,000, it requires board approval.
The way I understand this, that's why I asked the attorney to deal is we're approving $584. So...
You're, Mr. Chairman, you're approving a $584,855 bid. What you're also doing is you're going to authorize, you're going to authorize the purchasing department to approve purchase orders within that $585,000, even if, even if they exceed $10,000. Normally, they would have to come to you if it's $11,000. Even though you've already awarded the bid, you would have to approve the purchase order. What we're doing is taking that step out.
Okay.
Normally, it would be just one purchase order, but this is multiple projects. So, it's going to be an amount not to exceed that amount. But, you're saying that we can cut individual purchase orders for each project as opposed to one purchase order for all the projects. And it just gives us the approval. By ordinance, I can't approve a purchase order that meets or exceeds $10,000 without board approval. We're giving you the list of the projects and the dollar amount and you're giving me the approval to execute the purchase orders on an individual project basis.
So, the intent of this is not to exceed the $584,855?
No, sir. It's to give the approval for the individual purchase orders within that amount.
You understand it this way?
Yes, sir. And it makes sense through that way.
Well, let me make one comment on that. This is a unit price contract and the units that we put in, the contract comes up to that. It's not like a lump sum item. This will be paid per square yard of, we pay for cement, traffic control. But, when we listed the amount of the pay items, the bid came up to that. If we exceed the contract a certain amount, again, following purchase and order guidelines, we'll have to come back further board if to change order if something changes. But, the contract is not likely to come out exactly $584,855. If it does, I will be just flat amazed. But, it's a unit price contract based on bid amounts that we put in the bid.
Okay, I understand. I'll deal for District one.
Rod, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
What can we do to increase the amount of money the departments can spend without having to come to the board? I know we had a $10,000 limit now.
Yes, sir.
But, we have projects that fall around $12,000 or $14,000 and ties them up three or four weeks before they can get back to the board. How can we increase that if the board approved?
Yes, sir. The county manager and I are working on a final draft for revision to the purchasing ordinance that would address a lot of those concerns, especially purchases that involve annual contracts that the Board of Commissioners have already approved, which is a lot of Terry's asphalt, concrete, things of that nature. We have some proposed dollar amounts that, we're working out the final details on those that raise the limits and that make a difference with how we spend money. They're not just arbitrary numbers that we're throwing out there. We've taken a look at how we spend money, how we can increase efficiencies. And certainly, as you stated, none of these measures are to avoid the board, is to increase the efficiencies. And so, hopefully, we'll have something, we'll have a final draft before you guys hear very soon. So, all of those issues are being addressed currently.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any question? If not, have a resolution, Board of Commissioners awarding a unit price bid for cement stabilized base reclamation construction authorized purchase. To approve all purchase orders requested for FDR that exceed the $10,000 limitation. Somebody move in that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District two. Second District four. Any further discussion? If you're in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution recommended bid 16-10. Proposed proposal for the construction of Henry Parkway Path Enhancement. Federal aid project number Charlie Sphere Tango Echo Echo 009-00092. GDOT PL 009092. Terry.
Chairman, this is a, we're asking to approve a bid for the construction of sidewalks for the Henry Parkway Paths. I'm talking in general a little bit about the grant, get you up to speed and then while we recommended what we recommended on this one. There was a transportation enhancement grant for sidewalks and a multi-use path along Henry Parkway and sidewalks along Henry Parkway Connector. The original grant totaled $250,000. This grant did require 20% match from the county, which would be $50,000 that we ended up providing through in-house services. And that in-house service we did was the design aspect of it. This leaves the remaining 80% of the $250,000 grant of $200,000. grant of two hundred thousand dollars that can be spent on construction. We did a cost estimate on the whole project and, and what we thought the project, the total project was gonna cost three hundred and two thousand or something like that, a little over three hundred thousand, right at three hundred thousand dollars, I believe, before we sent it out to bid. Once we did that, we acknowledged that we only had two hundred thousand dollars available for federal dollars, but we had a project that was gonna cost three hundred thousand. That would mean the board would have to come up with the additional three hundred. So we got the idea of giving the board some options. So we broke the bid into three sections. What we call the base bid, we started a sidewalk at industrial. We started from industrial, came up Henry Parkway, along the side of the road, on the admin side of the road, the jail side of the road, went all the way up to Henry Parkway So we started at industrial, went to Henry Parkway, and then went all the way to one fifty-five on the Mercer side. So really, we did the sidewalk on one side of the road, on Henry Parkway, which was admin building side, and then on Henry Parkway Connector, just on one side, it was the Mercer side. That was base bid one. Alternate one did the multi-use path on the opposite side of the road on Henry Parkway, straight across from the admin building. Basically, we did a multi-use path on that side. And then alternate two did a sidewalk on the other side of Mercer, all the way from Henry Parkway up to one fifty-five. So we broke the bid into a base bid, alternate one and alternate two. When it was bid out, BRTU was the lowest all, were all bidder on all three options. Base bid one came in at two hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty cent. If we wanted to do the multi-use path on the other side of Henry Parkway, we would add eighty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. Then if we wanted to add the sidewalk on the other side of Mercer, that would be an additional ninety-nine thousand. It's here that what we've recommended tonight for award is this. We recommend the award of just the base bid, all right? Not alternate one, not alternate two. The reason that we recommend the base bid, that gets you a sidewalk, beginning at industrial on the admin side of the building, in front of the jail, all the way up to Henry Parkway Connector, continuing going toward one fifty-five on the Mercer side only. It doesn't do the multi-use path on the other side or the sidewalk on the other side of Mercer. The multi-use path, in my opinion, could be a project that our DOT might could work in at some point in time, because the multi-use path is just an asphalt, ten-foot paved path. It's something that we could do very easily in-house. And at the cost of eighty-three thousand, I believe we could dramatically come in a lot less on that. The same way on the alternate two, which puts sidewalk on the other side of Mercer. There is no businesses on that side currently, except one, and there is a sidewalk in front of it. I think if anybody that comes in on that side, we condition them to put their own sidewalk in, maybe we get that done by development as that corridor develops. Henry Parkway Connector on the other side, however, has already existing businesses, so we don't have that option there. So under those circumstances, I recommend, or our department recommends, just doing the base bid, which puts the county having to fund anything that's over two hundred thousand, and in your executive summary, you see a breakdown of those costs. So in, besides construction, we have some utility relocation, some sod and irrigation in front of Mercer for a total project cost, three hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We have two hundred thousand dollars available. The county's participation in getting this project moving forward would require a hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. What I'm again asking for tonight is just approval of the bid, but I wanted the county to know, if you award this bid, we've got to supplement a hundred and twenty-one thousand to get this work done.
Where'd that money come from?
That money will come from salary savings DOT? Yes, salary savings from DOT.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions? Just for my benefit, if we start at industrial, we're gonna be on the admin side, we're gonna run a sidewalk all the way up to Mercer, and on the Mercer side, we're gonna run a sidewalk all the way down to one fifty-five. That's the base.
Correct. We will have a sidewalk all the way from industrial all the way to one fifty-five.
Got you.
Be on the admin side and Mercer side.
I got you. Okay, anybody else got any questions? Comments, District Three?
Terry, this doesn't relate to this, but I just wonder, on Henry Parkway, I noticed that we got a lot of trees that are missing, that you could tell they had a plan and they died over the years. Do we have any kind of replanning of those trees in mind to do?
Not in this project. And I'm sure you didn't mean that to be part of this project.
No.
I will have to get with Tim and see if, either me or Tim Colley won probably needs to replant those in, you know, October, November, December, probably be the best time to do that, because if you try to plant them, as you know, in the summer, irrigation or water is a problem, they probably die, but the fall is the, is the time to do that. So I can get with Tim and see if we can't come up with those replacements.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Having award bid number sixteen dash ten for the construction sidewalks for the Henry Parkway, I'm sorry, I yield to Florida District Four.
Terry, were these bids based on linear feet? Is that, is that what they came in at?
The bid, let's see, it was a unit price contract. We had items for soil erosion, sidewalks. We even had to, because this was a federal project, we had to follow all federal guidelines. And two of the things we had to do was redo the entrances into the admin building, because the sidewalk has to go across the driveways coming into the admin building. The slope of those driveways were over two percent.
Right.
You can't have a sidewalk cross slope over two percent.
Right.
So we had to re-profile two of the driveways to meet federal specs. So there's a lot of hoops in here that we had to jump through to meet their specs to get sidewalks in, which really made the cost go up. So there's, we have a retaining wall in front of the admin building, because if you look, it's pretty steep grade, so we had to flatten that slope out. In order to retain that, we had to put a short retaining wall in, so between grassing, water quality, erosion control, asphalt, and then your concrete. So it was a unit price where we put all those in, items in by unit price and bid it out by the units. So it really wasn't per, per linear foot of sidewalk. Actually, the sidewalk unit price was square yard.
I'm just looking at the county participation at a hundred and twenty-one thousand. I mean, there's some needs that I know your department has, you know, with equipment and such forth, and I'm just wondering if that's the best use of your excess funds. And I'm wondering if maybe we should break this up in the base bid section into sections itself, just again, to shoehold that hundred and twenty-one to put toward equipment or things that we may need for your department in the future. It just seems a lot of money to put in on sidewalks in addition to the two hundred thousand that we're spending. Have you looked at, you know, on the other side of the road, do you have those same issues if you run a sidewalk on that, that north side? It looks like it's much cheaper on that north side.
It is, and I'll give my opinion of this overall process that we've been doing this project, this thing's been going on for at least six to seven years, going through the federal process, getting plans approved, and it's been a real exercise for us. I think, in my opinion, that what you have here is about two hundred thousand dollars worth of work, even though the price tag is three hundred thousand. You got about two hundred thousand dollars worth of work value. So the county's gotta put a hundred in this in addition to get two hundred thousand. So overall, I think it's a gain, you know, because we are having to put a hundred, but we're getting about two hundred, maybe two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of work. So we're getting some of it not free, because no federal money's free, but we are getting our part of federal money. The other half of it is, if you look at the pedestrian uses out there, where the pedestrians are going is to the jail, to the administration building, and to those apartments, and the, and the things along past Mercer. So I think if you don't provide the sidewalk all the way through there, you're shortchanging the ones that are using the sidewalk. I know I come into the work that way just about every morning, and afternoon going that way, and I see pedestrians coming from the apartments and the, I guess there may be townhouses, whatever they are over there, you know, coming toward the admin building, walking and exercising, and a lot of times they're in the road. I see a lot of, lot of pedestrians coming off industrial and either going to the jail or the health department and all those issues, you know, all those public buildings in there. I do think there is a need in there.
My question is, an a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar need?
Yes, sir. I mean, I think in the long run, we're this far in it, we've got fifty thousand dollars worth of engineering tied up in it, surveying, plans. Yes, we're gonna have to put a hundred and twenty thousand in it, but again, we get about two hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of value. So in the end, I think we're ahead a little bit, going ahead and using, but that's my opinion. This has been a tough one. But acknowledging the same thought, that's why we broke this thing up into three base bids, because I, I just, it would be hard for me to sit here and ask the board to award the whole thing, and, you know, we end up funding another two hundred thousand dollars for, that would have been tough. So that's why we just kind of recommend the base bid.
Anybody else have any questions? We have a resolution awarding a bid sixteen dash ten for the construction sidewalk for the Henry Parkway Path Project Transportation Enhancement, and in this, we are going to approve the base bid only in the amount of two hundred and ninety-two seven thirty-eight and fifty cents. Does somebody move in that direction? Have a motion, District One. Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Approval of the minutes for July the twenty-second, twenty fifteen, nine AM, and a six PM meeting. July the twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen, if somebody moved with approval, all three of these meetings is the minutes. So have a motion, District Three. Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Chairman and Commissioner comment? Chairman has no comments. Any commissioner like to be recognized now for any reason? Yes, sir, District Two.
I'd just like to give staff a heads up, because looking at my calendar, going into the first week in November, that first meeting, I'm gonna be at a conference out of state, and I won't be at that first meeting in November. So I just want to give staff and everybody a heads up, just in case there's any things specific to District Two, I want to give everybody enough, everybody enough time to plan ahead.
Okay, anybody else? County Manager, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir, I do.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I can correct you, yes, ma'am.
No problem. Just some general comments. This evening, there were comments made during the public comment period, and previously, two weeks ago, there were comments made in reference to myself, Angela Sorrow, and Nedra Swift, who are all employees here with the county. Those comments that were made were allegations of corruption, misuse of our powers, given the positions that we're in, and I've been very, very quiet about it. I've spoken with a lot of individuals, and they've said, "Don't say anything, it's not true, we believe you." But this is being televised. This is what's being put in the paper. And I've asked the board to support staff and to make sure that staff is protected from allegations as such. I'm not saying stop the public comment period, because I believe people have the right to speak their mind. But when you're speaking information, and it's not factual information, then I think it needs to be perfected in the record. There is nothing that I've done, Angela Sorrow or Nedra Swift, that I feel that I wouldn't do again. Every personal action form that was signed and executed was signed and executed based on guidance that I received from the board, either via a budget meeting, a public hearing, or conversations with each individual board member. And this evening, to have an individual stand before you all, and I'll take the personal action form for Shatira McKinney, which is my sister, that was placed on the overhead, that did not have my signature on it, but that, but was presented to you all as if I gave my sister a raise. I'm very offended by that, and I take it personal because it's not factual. I've been with the county for thirteen years, Ms. Sorrow's been with the county for over twenty years, and we've never had our integrity questioned, our ethics questioned, or anything else, and I won't stand for it. I will not stand for it. The one thing that I'm guilty of is caring about this county. The one thing Ms. Sorrow's guilty of is caring about this county. It's hard when you're trying to manage a county of sixteen hundred employees, serving as your interim county manager, your assistant county manager, your signatory for all final plots, your transportation planning director. So sometimes things do get, fall under the elbow of other things. But I want the public to know, and I want those that are watching tonight, I want the paper to know, that there is nothing that has been done that I feel is incorrect that I wouldn't do again. Thank you.
Thank you. County Manager, comments? County Attorney, you'd like to make any comments?
No, sir.
Upcoming meetings and events, October the sixth, nine o'clock AM, regular meeting. October the twenty-sixth, thirty PM is a regular meeting. We have some business that we need to discuss in executive session, future acquisition, acquisition of real estate and personnel matters. We don't have any pending litigation, do we, Council?
We, we might. Let's include that just in case it comes up.
Okay. So if somebody consider moving to a motion to adjourn executive session according to its provision of OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash three and other applicable laws pertinent to the advice of the county attorney for the purpose of all three. Acquisition of real estate pending and/or potential litigation personnel matters, if somebody moves, we do that. Have a motion, District One. Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We're going into executive session. Thank you.